Time of the hour for our meeting. We certainly appreciate all of you being here this afternoon. Those of you who joined us for the drop in from Ms. Airwood prior to the the meeting, what a special time that was. And our whole meeting will be a special time for us as we enjoy her company, certainly not for the last time. Could we have the invocation and pledge by the woman of the hour?
Okay, if y'all would stand and please bow your heads with me. Lord, I just thank you for all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Lord, and I thank you for my time on county council, Lord. And I just asked you to guide this county council today and help us to make the right decisions for the for the county and for the all the residents of the county, Lord. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda, which consists of the county council meeting of June 21st. Is there a motion that we adopt the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Reverend Scurry, is there any discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number two on the agenda are the additions, any additions or deletions to the agenda. Hearing none, is there a motion? We adopt the agenda as published, motion by Mr. Hilt, second by Ms. Airwood, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, motion carries unanimously. Item number three on our agenda is certainly one of the the best parts of council meeting, in my opinion, and that is an opportunity to acknowledge the people who make Newberry County great and special, and that is the people who work within the county employee. So Jeff, you take over from here, since you're changing the format.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Our first employee to recognize this evening is Mr. Tommy Long. It's a pleasure to recognize Tommy, our director of women's department here at the county. And Tommy came to work for us 15 years ago, and that was back in 2008. He came to work as urgency services director, and he's responsible for, in a position he still cares today. He's responsible for fire, rescue, urgency services, and emergency preparedness. He's got a lot of responsibilities, important job, he does a great job with it. It's kind of a second career for him, because he spent 24 years with the fire line company, who managed to lift the store. And he had a love, and still does, for fire and rescue. He's volunteered with the county since 1985, or 85, so I'm telling his age here. Forty years of the track record doing that, and we just appreciate all you do for the county. And that's why it's just such a pleasure for me to have this opportunity to recognize you on behalf of Chairman Johnson, the members of county council, and also our management team, we've got a number of department heads here. So I want to present you with this certificate for your 15 years of service with the county. And there's a pin there, and we also have a recognition. I look forward to working with you for many of your years. Now, this is a real privilege for me. Chris, do you think this is Chris Williams? Well, I'll just mention something about Chris real quick. He is a member of the public works department with 25 years of service with the county. Most folks know Chris Alexander from his motor grader route. But he's also a volunteer firefighter with the county, has done that many years. So we owe a lot of appreciation and gratitude to him for keeping our roads safe and passable, but then also protecting the lives and property in Newberry County. So we've got a certificate for him for 25 years of service, which is commendable, and also a token of appreciation. All right, our next employee to be recognized is Mr. Trey Adaway. Trey, if you could come forward. Trey has 10 years of service with the county in corrections and at the sheriff's department. He came to work for us back in July 2013 at the Newberry County detention center. And then after three years, he moved over to the sheriff's department, that would have been in 2016, as a deputy. And then he's on the three-year plan. Three years later, he got promoted to his current position of sergeant, that was in August of 2019. Trey's wife also works with the county, so it's a family affair, and we appreciate their service to Newberry County. And an interesting thing with him is that it's completely in his blood. He gets it legitimately, because his dad worked for the city police department and for the sheriff's department, and his grandfather was a city firefighter. So that's a family that is dedicated to protecting life and property and the welfare of our citizens. And that's why it's an honor for me to recognize you on behalf of county council for your 10 years of service. We got a certificate here, a pin, and token of our appreciation. Thank you for all you do. And then our last employee, but certainly not least, is Mr. Corey Cook. Corey, if you could come forward. Corey also came to work for us 10 years ago. Sheriff Walter hired him back in July 2013 after serving in the Marine Corps. And he was promoted in 2018 to his current position of sergeant. And like Trey, Corey's wife also works with Newberry County. She is a dispatcher, so that's another critical element of our public safety system here in the county. Very important position, and we certainly appreciate all you do to keep us safe. And that's why it's a privilege, on behalf of council and the county's management team, to recognize you for your 10 years of service, and give you a token of our appreciation. Thank you, ma'am.
No, you got it, you did a good job. I like it very much.
Thank you all so much for all you do.
All right. Item subsection B under item three on our agenda is a resolution honoring council member Mary Airwood. Is there a motion that this council passed the resolution that you all heard earlier? Every hand on council is a unanimous motion, if there is such a thing. We do have the motion, and we'll consider those a second. All in favor by show of hands, thank you so much. We would like to share this with everyone so that you might hear of the many accomplishments of Ms. Airwood. Whereas, Mary C. Airwood was born in Whitmire, South Carolina, and has been a proud lifelong resident of Newberry County. Whereas, after attending Greenville Technical College, Mary entered the real estate appraisal profession in 1994 and has held a real estate license from the state of South Carolina since 1995. Whereas, in 2003, Mary embarked on a career in tax assessment when she was hired as a residential appraiser by Spartanburg County. Working in the Spartanburg County Tax Assessor's Office for four years under Gil Bullman and Ed Hughes, Mary excelled and had held progressively responsible positions within the department, including residential appraiser, senior appraiser, and department manager. Whereas, Mary returned to Newberry County in 2007 when she was appointed Newberry County Tax Assessor, a position to which she has aspired and ultimately retired from on April 1st, 2020, after nearly 14 years of exemplary service. Whereas, during her highly successful tenure as Newberry County Tax Assessor, Mary completed three countywide reassessments and three aerial photography flyovers, implemented a new identification system for mobile homes, coordinated the conversion to a new state-of-the-art computer-assisted mass appraisal system, and oversaw the development of the Newberry County's geographical information system and the deployment of GIS and assessor's office data to the web. Whereas, Mary was a member of the county assessors of South Carolina and the South Carolina Association of Assessing Officials. And during her lengthy and distinguished career as an assessing official, she held a number of positions within these two organizations, including Secretary of Treasurer of CASC from 2017 to 2019, a member of the Board of Directors for SCAAO from 2017 to 2019, president-elect of SCAAO in 2019, president from 2020 and 2021, and past president of SEAO in 2022. Mary was also named an honorary member of the South Carolina Association of Assessing Officials in 2020. Whereas, Mary was elected to Newberry County Council in 2020 to represent District 2 and began her official duties as the county elected official in January 2021. Whereas, during her time on Newberry County Council, Mary has served as a member of Newberry County Committees of County Council, including finance, personnel and internal government, and public safety and courts. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Newberry County Council hereby recognizes Mary C. Airwood for her outstanding professional achievements, for her many positive contributions to Newberry County government, and for her dedicated service to the citizens of Newberry County, South Carolina. Mary, would you, let's go around front.
You and I will remember, most people will not remember, have a Kodak moment. And we also have this plaque recognizing your service as Newberry County Assessor and Newberry County Council District 2. It's in special recognition and appreciation for your dedication and service to the citizens of Newberry County, presented by Newberry County July 19, 2023. So we're going to give you this, you can look like an MVP with both plaques up there, how about that? Yeah.
I would like to take just a moment based on that resolution and presentation by council. I know that I don't want to belabor the matter long, but we certainly want to give council an opportunity to to address Ms. Airwood. So Mr. Shealy, any remarks that you would like to share, sir?
It's been a privilege working with you on council. We came in together. We drank through a fire hose our first little bit. Administrators, but I think things finally settled down, and we're going to miss you and all your knowledge, and it'll all be missed.
Thank you, I'll miss you too.
I enjoyed serving with you, wasn't very long, but I know you have to do the right thing and take care of your daughter.
Thank you, thank you.
Reverend Scurry?
Ms. Airwood, we worked together while I used to work in the trade division. And down through the years, we always had a good relationship. When you got on council, it got better. And I thank you so much for your dedication to the whole county council, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
I truly appreciate you being here. Like I said earlier, you came on council and you jumped right in, and you hadn't stopped yet.
No.
So we truly going to miss you, but we truly understand, and don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Vice to your hip?
Yes, Mary, it takes special strength to do what you did, to understand the priorities, to keep your family, your God, your family, and your business in that priority order. And so it has been wonderful working with you. For those that may not know, Mary was always prepared. She would read the information provided and in many cases ask very probing questions that made sure that we had the right answers to. So Mary, we're going to miss you, thank you.
Thank you.
I just love you. You've been a blessing and such a friend and a confidant, and I just thank God for you. And less well said, you are always prepared and then some, and we will certainly miss that on council. So you're a blessing, I admire you for doing the right thing, which is rare in today's world, so I thank God for that.
Yeah, I thank all of y'all for serving with me here, and it was a very tough decision. But as I said when I first announced it, that I put God first, my family second, and my vocation third. And my daughter and family needed me after she had went through her two brain surgeries. And my daughter and family needed me after she had went through her two brain surgeries and continues to still have some problems. She's much, much better, but she needs her mother up there close to her. So with that, I prayed about it. And next thing I knew, my house was sold and I was on the way moving. So I look forward to trying to help her and the rest of my family. And my phone's always there that if you ever want to call and ask me something or see me or run something by me and get my opinion, then feel free to call me. And I do love Newberry County and I look for the best for the county to continue and for us to make the right decisions here on council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. After that, we move back into our agenda. Item number four on our agenda are presentations. And we have Crystal Morpheus, who is going to come and give us a... Well, Rick Farmer doesn't look like Crystal Morpheus. We have Rick and Crystal with us. And so we want to have an overview presented to us of the Newberry County Economic Development Strategic Plan. So whoever's going to take us, go right ahead.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Mr. Alexander's joining us.
Oh, okay. Just show up when you want to. Yes, no, please do. Come on down. Come on down.
Well, Chris, it's a privilege to... Good to meet you too. It's a privilege to recognize Chris this evening for his twenty-five years of service to the county. Chris has been in the public works department for that time. And I mentioned some of this earlier. So he has had a number of important responsibilities with the department, but I think he's most recognizable with his motor driver work in that round, but then also as a volunteer firefighter. So he's made many contributions to our county and he's done it over a long time. And it's just an honor for me to recognize you for twenty-five years. And to do that on behalf of council and also our management team, we have a number of department heads here. And so I wanted to present you with this certificate and that pin, recognizing you for twenty-five years and token of our appreciation and thank you for all you do.
Appreciate it.
Good, sir.
We appreciate it.
Okay, now, Mr. Farmer and company.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. For the record, I am Rick Farmer, the Director of Economic Development. It was a little more than a year ago, spring of twenty twenty-two, when I lobbied the county administrator at that time for us to finally do an economic development strategic plan. He was very receptive and I was pleased that the council was receptive to this as well. So we began this process about a year ago. County council appointed a seven-member economic development task force that served us greatly during this period. And the end result, of course, is this plan, this product. Now, I want you to know this is not Rick Farmer's economic development strategic plan. This is a true community strategic plan. We held meetings from one end of the county to the other. We engaged more than four hundred citizens in total. We did surveys of both individuals and businesses to figure out what they... What direction do they believe we should go with respect to economic development? And I encourage you, of course, if you want to know what your constituents think, it's probably in this plan and these appendices because we heard many, many varied opinions over that time. So we did a formal RFP process and we entertained numerous proposals from firms like Crystal's who did this process. But she scored the best and I was glad that we got... I've actually known her for years, but this is my first chance to ever work with her. So I'm glad it worked out that way. She has a presentation to show you guys tonight. So with that, I would like to introduce you to Crystal Morpheus. She is the owner and operator of Creative Economic Development Strategies, our consultant in this process.
Thank you so much, Rick.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'm so glad to present this strategic plan to you. As Rick said, it has been in the works for many months. You heard a draft presentation from my colleague early this year. We took your comments and additional comments and I'm presenting the final overview and you have the written products in front of you. I'd first like to commend this council for investing in strategic planning specifically for economic development. You know that that is a department that is your business department. It attracts a tax base to this community that provides revenue for the services of public works, public safety, and other services of the community. So I commend you for making this investment, really creating this roadmap for the future. Rick mentioned there is a task force that led this process. This is a working task force. They met many times throughout the strategic planning process, providing guidance and feedback. They were our check and balance throughout. And several of these members attended every one of our community input sessions. And as Rick said, they were across communities, you know, Whitmire to Chapels to Newberry and everywhere in between. Some of them, I'll call out Barbara Miller, for example, attended every single meeting that we had. They were highly engaged. So I commend you on appointing a very meaningful task force, somebody who's very helpful to us. So Rick mentioned some of the elements of the strategic planning process. We did assess product, which are sites and buildings and economic development. We looked at your target sectors. We did a workforce analysis. You know that workforce is the number one concern of all businesses today and will be due to our ongoing labor shortage. He mentioned the levels of engagement we had with surveys and input sessions as well. We have reviewed the business retention program, the marketing program, the attraction program. It was a thorough analysis, both quantitatively and qualitatively. And I think this is a significant talking point here. Over four hundred people had input into this strategic planning process. They turned out at community meetings. And for some of them, they said how that was the first time the county had asked their opinion on something related, especially to economic development. And so we had great turnout. We had excellent turnout on surveys. It really was a community-wide, community-wide, a planning process. So as Rick said, if you want to know what the public thinks about economic development, read the in-depth strategic plan. I'm going to go through the goals and strategies at a high level and be glad to answer some questions. Goal one is really about attracting, retaining, and fostering startup businesses that will diversify the economy. That first strategy has to do with existing business. The majority of new investment and job creation come from businesses that are already located here that are growing and expanding. That takes a lot of staff time to call on companies, visit with them, identify their hurdles for growth, and help them solve it. They're really a solution person in the business retention program. Marketing to attract new businesses, that's very important. You know that your economic development director participates with the state and regional agencies in marketing to attract businesses. And that's very important to diversify the tax base and diversify the economy and provide more tax base. And then supporting a startup culture. We don't want to overlook the importance of small business and entrepreneurs in the economies. We think about, you know, small business is big business, especially in Newberry County. So the action steps underneath that strategy would be things like providing more information on resources to small businesses. And one example is just to create some how-to guides, how to start certain businesses in the county so that we make sure that entrepreneurs know what market opportunities are here. The second goal is all about talent. I mentioned that the labor shortage is hitting every business, big and small. It will continue. Companies locate and grow where they know they have a strong talent pipeline for the future. That first strategy is about collaboration with Newberry College and also Piedmont Tech to retain their graduates. We were fortunate enough to have some of the college students in our focus groups and many of them said, "We would love to stay here if there were employment opportunities for us." So that's one of the strategies under talent. Another is to market this community to attract talented workers. People now have a real choice of where they can live because we have remote work options. We have a lot of different options we used to not have. So attracting them to live in Newberry County and to be a sticky place, as it's called, so they stick to this place once they're here. The third strategy is about raising career awareness in Newberry County. So think about all of the careers that are here, but young people just don't know of career opportunities. We give some examples of marketing campaigns that other communities have used to raise career awareness so that young people know what the pathways are in this community to employment here. And then also the last one is about developing workforce skills that support existing business growth. So think about, think about the skill sets that are needed for existing business, but also businesses of the future. One of the things that we've recommended is for Newberry County to explore a college promise program like Abbeyville and McCormick Counties partnered with a foundation so that every high school graduate can go to the technical college to receive a certificate or two-year degree. It's that type of opportunity for youth that is important. It shows them a pathway from high school into employment. The third goal is about choice locations. This is product development, sites and buildings. And if you think about what a company needs to locate, they'll become interested because of real estate, but then usually labor will seal the deal, but real estate gets them interested. We recommend a long-range product development plan. It takes a long time to develop a Class A industrial park, business park. And really you need to start thinking out, what are Newberry County's, what's the next park and the next one after that to have that long-range product development plan? We also talk about space for smaller business as well. So we talk about industrial parks for larger business, but we don't want to overlook that it's important to invest in space for small business too. And then place making is also part of that being a choice business location. So what are the recreational and amenity assets that are going to attract not only companies here, but people? And in the focus groups that we had across the community, we heard a lot of discussion about recreation, quality of life amenities to support their individual communities, the county overall. It would support talent attraction and business development as well. But when we heard citizens talk about taking advantage of natural resources, the wonderful, for example, outdoor recreation that you have, all that can be leveraged in economic development to attract people and companies. The fourth goal is about investing in community capacity building. So that first strategy is about facilitating connections across the county. Another thing we heard from citizens was it was so nice to be together as a group and meeting people across their community and from other communities because we have people visit several of these sessions. And so continuing that conversation is something like a state of the county address, for example, and continue to be part of the vision group that you already have established. Maintain those connections both inside the county, but also regionally as well. The second strategy is about growing in a managed way. So we heard from parts of your county that they want to make sure that Newberry County retains its character as you grow. I mean, growth is coming to you from a couple of different directions. And you're going to grow, but they want to make sure that you grow in a way that maintains the wonderful quality of life that you have, the small-town feeling that you have in your community and really maintains the character. So that's a lot of advanced planning to make sure that you grow in a way that you want to. And then support the development of future leaders in the community. I live in a rural and small place and I know that all of you wear many, many hats. And so really looking to that next generation of leaders and developing them for something like through a citizens academy, for example, is very popular in some communities to help develop that next crop of future leaders to take on positions, for example, on advisory boards and nonprofit boards, and maybe eventually a city or county council one day so that you have these leaders that are developed and come and will take on future leadership roles. And then I also want to talk about keeping stakeholders and elected leaders and everyone informed about economic development. Another thing we heard from citizens was it was so nice to hear what was going on in economic development and for them to have input. So a good line of communication from the department out to the communities, like internal public relations and communications, things like news and announcements and social media is really important. Now, all this strategic plan sounds great, but there's a lot of work to be done. So the fifth goal is about the economic development organization, about your department, to ensure that it is resourced and has the capacity to implement the strategic plan. That first strategy is about, is about resources. The last one is about staff, which is another area of resources. As you know, the things that we talk about in the strategic plan, long-range planning, industrial park development, things like that do and will take county investment over the future. And another example is staffing for success. Your economic development department has been down a staff person. And if you think about the things I've talked about, visiting with companies, marketing this community externally, helping businesses solve the challenges they have to growth, raising career awareness by forming business and education partnerships, all of that's going to take a lot of staff time and resources. That middle strategy is about engaging the private sector. You have really good models across South Carolina of public-private partnerships where the private sector will not only invest in economic development, but provide their expertise and leadership to economic development. There are good examples in Florence County, Dorchester County, and many others around the state that you can look to for best practices in public-private partnerships in economic development. We do have an implementation guide, a recommendation for our next steps in implementation in the plan. So the first year, and I know your director has been working on things like already, so there are examples in the first year of things like the BRE Visitation Program. That's Business Retention Expansion, putting a focus on existing business. There are other things, for example, like bringing the Department of Commerce here for a tour, which I know your director does. In the second year, things will take more funding and more planning, more advanced planning. So for example, things like target sector information on the website is an example. Increasing marketing about talent, for talent on the website is another example of something that'll take a little bit more planning and resources. And then your three items take even more planning and more resources. For example, maybe a website complete review. As you know, a website is really the front door as companies look to Newberry County for location information. So we also metrics, how are you going to measure success? Because you will continue to make investments in economic development. So how are you going to measure the success of the department and the strategic plan? And we make some recommendations for that. So we hope that the council will adopt the strategic plan. I know that your director has already been implementing some of the things within the scope of this year's program of work, but really look forward to launching this plan. It's been a year in the making with more than four hundred citizens having input. You've had a task force that has vetted this and recommends it to council. They voted to endorse the adoption or recommend to adopt this plan. So a lot of work has went into it and really it's that rocket on the screen there, ready to launch and move forward. So with that, I'll be glad to take, I'll say the easy questions and the hard questions, I'll punt to your director.
If you have softball questions, she'll take it.
I'll take the hard question.
Can we hear any questions? Okay. Hearing none, my understanding is we're going to have one more opportunity to review this before we put it on the agenda for official adoption. Is that the way we plan? That gives council one last time to make any changes, having heard the presentation and everything before we put it on the agenda for official adoption. Any questions while we got the expert here?
Again, I just...
It's not a question, but I think it's wonderful. Are any of your team members here this evening?
They are not. You probably remember Penny Whiteheart, who gave you the draft presentation. She was on the ground with me. She had another engagement this evening. Our other two team members, Heather Beard does research and Billy Carter is responsible for the design of all of the deliverables as well. I want to, yes, did you have something else?
Oh, I was just going to compliment the team, you and the team, especially those citizens of Newberry County. When you get four hundred people, that's a lot better than seven when it comes to making decisions and recognizing things that need to be done. And that's great.
Absolutely. So with any plan, take off chunks of it each year. I mean, it's a multi-year plan. So I hope your director will bring back to you, this is what we pulled from the plan this year to work on. And the next year, here are four or five more things we're going to work on in the budget. And the next year, four or five more things. It's like you're eating an elephant, you know, with one spoonful at a time. And that's the way you tackle a strategic plan. I also encourage you to make it a dynamic document, just like any of you have a business plan. You constantly review that business plan and you make updates and course corrections so that it remains a very active document and doesn't sit on a shelf and gather dust. You've had too much involvement, input, excitement, investment into this plan to just let it sit. Thank you all. And thank you all for letting us facilitate this. We have very much enjoyed our engagement in Newberry County and all the citizens we've met and enjoyed working, especially with your economic development director, who has done a great job leading from the Newberry County side and has been excellent to work with.
Thank you so much. And I do, I think the citizen turnout was absolutely amazing at these. The first one I went to, as I walked out the door, my wife said, "You think there'll be a lot of people there?" And I said, "I don't. I wish they would." And then I ended up parking down the street and having to walk back because so many citizens. And so that kind of buy-in is what makes Newberry County special. So I do, I do think that was amazing. was amazing. Anybody else?
I appreciate it.
I'd like to thank your staff also for coming and getting the people involved and interacting with them, getting their ideas out to be able to put this plan together. So, we'd like to thank you for doing that great job.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Right. Item number five on our agenda is ordinance number 0601-2023, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad lorem taxes and an incentive agreement by and between Newberry County, South Carolina, and Project Rubicon to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. Subsection A is the public hearing. We hereby declare the public hearing open. Be one would like to speak related to this ordinance, please feel free to step forward to the podium now. No one has signed up, but this is the public hearing, so you can still come forward and speak about this ordinance. Seeing no one, unless there's objection from council, I'll declare the public hearing closed. With no objection, I call the, declare the public hearing closed. Subsection B would be third reading of this ordinance. Is there a motion that this be third reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy and a second by Mr. Hip. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise. And I think the worst kept secret in Newberry County is that that related to Kraft Heinz. So, item number six is Resolution Number 09-23, Resolution to Mean Employee Handbook of County of Newberry to Provide for Employee Longevity Awards and Recognitions. Mr. Shaker.
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of council. Get this microphone. Okay. Mr. Chairman and members of council, this is a resolution that would establish longevity awards for our employees based on their years of service. It would be retroactive if y'all approve this to July 1, so it would apply to the employees that were here with us this evening for recognition. And the benefit that, one-time benefit that it would provide would be a $250 longevity award for five years of service, 300 for 10, 350 for 15, 400 for 20, 450 for 25, and then for 30, and then any additional increment of five years of service, $500. And our current policy is 1% of salary capped at 500. So, this is a modification of what we've been doing.
Okay. And I understand that the taxes and all that related will be accommodated for so that they get the full benefit of that bonus.
Yes, sir. That's right. We'll gross it up.
Okay. All right. You've heard the resolution and had an opportunity to review it in your packets. Is there a motion related to that resolution? Motion by Mr. Reader to approve that revolution, resolution, second by Mr. Sees. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, by show of hands. And opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven on our agenda is consideration and approval of proposals for on-call environmental testing services for CPT, CPST, and potential county projects, and that's related to RFP 2013-08. Ms. Crystal Walter, Director of Purchasing.
Thank you. What we staff did was just solicit to have our own environmental services company onboard for the CPST projects or anything that comes up with the county where we may need to have engineers onboard, you know, without going through this process and delaying the need for those services. We received five responses, and the evaluation committee consisted of Mac Bartley with Public Works Department, Ron Powell, and myself. We would like to discuss negotiating contracts with two of the highest-ranked firms, EAS Professionals and ECS Southeast. So, if willing, we would use these firms in conjunction with the needs on the CPST projects as well.
Okay. Are there questions from Ms. Walter? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the negotiation with the two-
Highest-ranked.
Highest-ranked proposers? Motion by Mr. Hip. Is there a second? By Mr. Shealy. Is there a discussion? All in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. And she gets to stay right put for a couple more of these. Number eight is a consideration of approval of proposals for on-call debris monitoring and debris removal management services, and that's request for proposal 2023-10.
Right. Okay. We solicited the contract that expired for these services that are required to have in place in case there's an event where we need to have cleanup. We have to have two companies. This goes along with item number nine on the agenda as well. The, this particular solicitation is for the debris monitoring and management of the removal company that removes the debris. And it's required of FEMA to have it in place prior to any event that may occur.
Okay.
Like I said, we received five responses, and the evaluation committee consisted of Tommy Long, Mike Posano, and myself. And the highest-ranked firm was Thompson Consulting Services, and that is who staff recommends for these services.
Okay. And is that a pay-as-you-go type service?
It's as you need them.
Yes. Yeah.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. Are there other questions?
I've got a question. Crystal, I noticed the preferred vendor is located in Florida. We do have two South Carolina vendors. Does Thompson have a local office?
I think their office is located in Florida. Of course, a lot of these companies are near-water areas, you know, whether they come from Alabama or wherever. There were, well, there was one in Columbia, Goodwin Mills Kwood. It's just how we evaluated them based on their response and their experience. I can give you the evaluation criteria that we used to determine them. It had nothing to do with the location. It was clearly just a matter of their proposal that they submitted and their qualifications within that proposal. The other companies, one was in Charleston, one was in Mississippi, one was in Texas, and of course, this one in Lakeland, Florida, in Columbia.
But you did consider the fact that in your evaluation that there were two companies that were closer? Or you didn't consider that at all?
It was not a consideration.
I'm just wondering how responsive a company in Florida could be versus a company in Columbia.
I understand. As I stated, a lot of these companies are on the coast. We do have one in Charleston. I believe Ross Dan, Tommy, if I'm not mistaken, was the vendor that we had for the past two, two years. They were out of Charleston. It's just how they were evaluated, and the committee ranked them as such individually. No, we did not take into consideration that they were in the state.
The one in Charleston that you mentioned that's currently doing that service for us-
Just expired, but yes.
Have we been displeased with their-
We've not needed them because there's not been an event where we would need to call them out for services.
When we, if we were to have an event, what kind of timeframe would be, we'd be looking at that they would need to respond?
I would have to go back through their particular response and see if that was mentioned. I don't recall if that was mentioned in the solicitation. Tommy, do you know?
I believe it was, I'm looking so many of those things, I can remember exactly what they were doing. I'm thinking it was 72 hours.
Forty-eight to 72 hours is what Tommy said.
On an as-needed basis, is there any type of retainer fee that we have to pay just to have them, so we call them up?
You mean?
Like, do we have to pay a fee, like to have them?
No. There's no fee upfront for either one of these contracts unless it's engaged as a-
Unless they call in if we have some type of damage they have to clean up.
That's right.
Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion related to this proposal?
I make a motion that we give the recommended, just to have-
Okay. Have a motion that we approve the recommendation. Is there a second? Second by Reverend Curry. Is there a discussion?
Since I had some comments, I will make the information known that all three of the people who did assess the various vendors all ranked Thompson as their primary number one. So, based on that, I would, I would agree with going with Thompson, even though I've got some reservation about distance.
Yes, sir. Anybody else with comments? Hearing none. All in favor, by show of hands. And opposed likewise. Sorry, that slid forward with my back caught, so I probably made a funny face. All right. Item number nine, which she already said was related, is consideration and approval for proposals for on-call debris removal and disposal services, and that is RFP Number 2023-11.
As I stated, this is the actual removal services of the debris. We received five responses. The evaluation committee consisted of Tommy Long, Mike Posano, and myself. Of those five, we did rank Southern Disaster Recovery out of Greenville, South Carolina as the highest-ranked firm. Staff does recommend the highest-ranked firm.
Okay. Are there questions?
Well, this one is unlike the previous one in that all three evaluators were in agreement, even though Southern Disaster Recovery is the recommended one here. Two of the three didn't have, let's see.
You're talking about committee members?
Two of the three did not rank it as the highest, but it came out numerically high due to the spread. This one is, however, closer. They're in Greenville. That should make them-
Tommy, he said that's the current vendor as well.
They're the current contractor.
So, they're the removal and disposal, but the other company monitors it.
Monitors what they do.
What they do.
Is there a motion related to the approval of this recommendation? Motion by Mr. Sees. Second by Reverend Curry. Is there a discussion? All in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 10 is consideration and approval of proposals for engineering services for the Supertown Road Gary Street Whitmire SC Sidewalk Project, which is CDBG project number 4-CE-22-09, RFP Number 2023-12.
Yes, sir. We solicited for proposals for these engineering services and received three responses the second time around. We actually solicited the first time and received no responses. The three that responded on the second solicitation were AECOM, the Land Plan Group, Rogers and Calcott. Staff does recommend, in conjunction with the Central, is it? Central Midlands, I'm sorry. Central Midlands Council of Government that the highest-ranked firm was AECOM, and we do ask that we can negotiate with the highest-ranked firm for these services funded by the CDBG grant. Mr. Srouse is here as well, if you have any questions about the grant.
Hearing no questions. Mr. Hip?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we authorize staff to negotiate architectural and engineering services for this project using a procedure that complies with state and federal guidelines for community block, development block grant-funded projects. I'd like to add the caveat that the final approval of the vendor will be within our approved budget without coming back before council.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there a second? There's a second by Mr. Shealy. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 11 is a consideration of a motion to authorize the county administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding with Greenwood County, Lawrence County, the Greenwood Commissioners of Public Works, and the Lawrence County Water and Sewer Authority to jointly fund an update to the Lake Greenwood Master Plan. Mr. Shaker.
Yes, sir. We're excited about this project. This is a project that Greenwood County, as the owner of the lake, is spearheading. They've selected Arnett Muldro and Associates out of Greenville. I actually had some personal experience working with them while I was at the city in Newberry. They did a market analysis for us and branding project there. They do exceptional work. So, I think Greenwood County's made a good choice there. They approached us as a county that has shoreline on the lake to participate in the project. I think they were more interested, they were less interested in money from us and more interested in our participation. So, we will actively participate on y'all's behalf in that effort. Because of our shoreline being much smaller than Lawrence and Greenwood County, what they've asked us to contribute is much smaller. So, this is a $108,000 project, and they've asked us to fund $5,000 of it, which y'all approved as part of the budget process.
Exactly. We already, in fact, we budgeted a little more than that.
We did.
They don't need to know that.
I didn't tell them.
Unless they're watching.
Unless they're watching. It's too late now. It's too late now. By the time they see us, it'll be old.
Did they base that amount on the amount of shoreline we have, and is that reflective of the changes that were just made by the geodetic survey for Newberry and Lawrence County where we lost that property?
No, sir. I think it was more art than science. So, yeah, they just, they came up with 5,000. But the partners in the project, just for the benefit of everyone in the room, it's Greenwood County, Lawrence County, ourselves, the Lawrence County Water and Sewer Authority, and Greenwood CPW. That's the city's power, natural gas, and water utility, and they provide a lot of service out throughout Greenwood County, including along the lake.
All right. Any other questions? All right. You've heard the recommendation. It is funded and under budget. Is there a motion that we approve our county administrator to enter? We got a motion by Mr. Sees and a second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, by show of hands. And opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 12 is appointments. We have a couple of appointments to make, one of them very exciting for this council. So, subsection A is the appointment of the clerk to council. Is there a motion for the appointment of clerk to council? Yes, sir. Mr. Sees, up high and quick.
I think I make a motion that we appoint our clerk or council that was chosen during the interview process.
I think we can actually come out and name that candidate now.
Second.
Mr. Andrew Wigger, the clerk to council and county public information officer. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hip. Is there a discussion? I'd just like to say what a great win for Newberry County, both as a clerk to council, and what an asset you will be for the public information side of the county and all the things that you bring to the table. So, I believe it's going to be an exciting partnership that only starts there and grows from there. So, I'm excited. Any others?
Same thing. Welcome aboard, Andrew. You've been to a lot of these meetings.
Yes.
But now you'll come under a different set of circumstances.
Be careful what you ask for.
Amen. So, anyway, it's good to have you.
Yeah. From what I understand, you'll be coming in on your birthday. That's great. That's great.
All right, we'll call the question. All those in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. Did you, you showed me a hand, didn't you?
I did.
Okay. I didn't see it. I'm sorry. It's like, okay. The motion carries unanimously. Subsection B is a board of rural fire control appointment from County Council District Two.
We have Rodney Beatonball that has admitted his resignation from the Rural Fire, Fire Board, and I'd like to thank him for all his many years of service. And to replace him, we ask that we appoint Paul Cromer to this board for District Two.
There's a motion to appoint Paul Cromer to the Board of Rural Fire Control for District Two. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shealy. Is there a discussion? All those in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. And I would enjoin you, there is no telling how much time and effort Rodney has put into Newberry County and the fire service and his community and his church, and so absolutely, he's a blessing. He will be missed. Any other appointments? Hearing none, we arrive at public comments on our agenda, and we have someone I hadn't had the opportunity to speak to in person. We spoke by email a couple of times, Mr. Greg Grantham.
Thank you, Joe. Ma'am. I'm here to speak on Airbnbs. We've run into some problems with Airbnbs in our neighborhood. We have, at the present time, we have three that are actually functioning, that are businesses. We have another two that are being built that I know of. The problems we're running into is that there's only a hundred and twenty homes in our neighborhoods, and we already have five Airbnbs. We'd like to, we'd like the number, or at least limit them, to a number, one for every hundred in the neighborhoods, because we feel that they're just, they're royal pain. We spend more time picking up their trash whenever we, they leave than anything else. We have picked up trash from all three of our neighborhoods, Waters Edge, Windmill Landing, Somerset Bay, and we go down thirty-nine, or two-thirty-nine from Pineland, and we go down County Line Road all the way back to thirty-nine picking up trash. And some of this trash is actually just bags of trash. They don't know the hours on our dump sites. They get over there, they find out, oops, it's closed. They have nowhere to put it and don't want to drive back and dump it at the house that they were staying at. We've had a number of complaints, speeding complaints, noise, music up until 5:00 a.m. The problem we run into is that with our bylaws, we have to have sixty-six percent of the people who own property in our neighborhood to vote. A lot of these people, number one, the property is still wooded. These people don't live, a lot of them don't even live in the state of South Carolina. They bought from other states. So, we send them out ballots anyway. Everybody that owns land gets a ballot. The votes that we get back, they don't reach sixty-six percent. So, whatever we sent the ballot out for to be voted on, we can't do anything. We got to have the sixty-six percent to vote. Otherwise, the motion will not carry. And that is the biggest problem we've run into. Like I said, noise is a big problem. The trash is a big problem. We've also run into problems where most everybody that lives on the lake or in our area, right there at Newberry County, we all know that it's a no-wake zone within one hundred feet of any dock. These people, either they don't know or they don't seem to care. Boats, jet skis, and they'll come right up within twenty-five feet. I have several on my phone that I've actually videoed as they went by, and I live way back into a cove. I got to calling around on this subject, and I was able to find out that there are no codes for these businesses to go by. And I call it a, a business because I think that's what an Airbnb is. They do the same thing that a, that a hotel or a motel does. They rent it out. It's to make money, to put in their pocket. They have, they're not required to have a business license. They're, have no codes, no safety inspections. And basically, we'd like to see them have to have something along those lines. They should have to pay a hospitality tax if they're going to act like a hotel or a motel. They should have to go by the same safety standards hotels and motels have to go by, right down to having a evacuation plan posted on the walls. But they're not required to have any of that at this time. We'd like to see the sheriff have the power to, if this is a nuisance business, to be able to shut it down or at least bring it to you and let y'all vote to shut that business down. That he should have that power. And right now, I was looking over the, over all the county ordinances. I couldn't find one. I come from Jacksonville, North Carolina. I retired from the Marine Corps in two thousand and three. Took that uniform off. I put on another uniform, a blue one, and went to work for the police department, Jacksonville, North Carolina, till I retired again. Our police chief could go up to the city council and take a list of the calls that we have made to businesses, and he could show it to them, and the city council could come up and go, okay. Yeah, it's a, it's a nuisance business. We'll shut them down. I can't find that anywhere on the books here. I don't know if the city of Newberry has one, but haven't seen one in, for the county of Newberry. Also, our, our EMS and our firefighters, our volunteer firefighters, they've answered three calls already since May to go out and look for floaters that had been floating down between Buzzards Roost Dam and Lake Murray and had to locate them because they were lost. You know, these, it takes money to do that out of, you know, our pockets or the taxpayers' pockets. And we'd like to see them at least have to come up and pay some of that. I mean, we had two different volunteer fire departments. We had Newberry Sheriff's Department, I believe, was out there. Saluda County was out there. And I do believe we had a couple of state troopers that were out there with us on, on a couple of nights. Of these three, two of them were tourists, or two of the instances were from tourists out and away. If we could get an ordinance or anything in writing from the local government or the state government to come in and say, hey, this is a business, it would help us out a lot. We actually have a bylaw on our books that states, you know, you cannot run a business from your home or use your business as, or use your home as a business. If we could get a little bit of help, that would be a, a big help to us. I do know that we have a new HOA that's going to be voted on, that will be coming in. They will be voted on and actually take office in October. How much good that's going to do us, I don't know. It's, it's all going to depend on them and how far they're willing to go. I've been in touch with you, Mr. Johnson. I've also been in touch with Representative Joe White, you know, with the state. I know Mr. White has told me, he was, he, he actually surprised me. I sent him the same message I sent you, and he didn't, he called me. And we sat there and we talked for about thirty minutes on this one subject, and he was pretty much running along the same lines we were running on. We would like to see them considered a business and see them have to step up and start having some kind of codes that they have to go by and safety standards. That's all I have. I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We have been in correspondence. I have gotten complaints from Lake Murray as well.
Yes, and I, I meant to throw that out there because it's, it's not just Lake Greenwood that's having these problems. It's also down at Lake Murray.
So, we, we are, we know this is a problem. Anywhere, everywhere I go, I'm hearing more about this. So, I have asked Jeff to do some research for us to see what the possibility of even entertaining it was. So, I mean, we're early on in the process. Be glad for y'all to ask him any questions, but...
If I can do anything, please call me.
It, it's just going to be a work in progress for a little while to pull it together.
I, I came up here and I wanted to get it out to you, but I know it's, it's going to be a, a time-consuming effort.
Thank you so much, sir. All right, next item on our agenda is executive session. Subsection A under the executive session is a contractual matter for discussions related to the lease agreement with the Newberry Pistol Club and also an economic development matter related to Project Viking. Is there a motion that we move into executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reeder. Is there a discussion? All in favor by show of hands. It's unanimous. We'll move into executive session. I give you my commitment, as I try to each time we go, to be as brief as possible and get right back into public session.
Word, fifteen minutes, right? We, coming out of executive session, is there a motion that we return to open session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, and opposed likewise, we return to open session. Newberry County Council met in executive session for the aforementioned reasons, no action was taken in executive session. Item number fifteen on our agenda is ordinance number zero seven zero one dash two zero two three, which is an ordinance for the purpose of leasing county property located as part of the fairgrounds property, TMS number three nine nine dash three nine dash two, to the Newberry Pistol Club. This is first reading, is there a motion, this be first reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in...
I'd like to recuse myself of this matter.
Okay, he's gonna recuse himself from the vote since he's a member there. All, you, you can stay, we're just gonna vote now. All in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimously with Mr. Sees abstaining and recusing himself from the vote. Sorry, not abstaining, recusing himself, there's a difference. Item number sixteen is resolution number one zero dash two three, which is an inducement resolution committing to negotiate fee in lieu of ad verbatim taxes between the Newberry County and Project Viking, identifying the project and other matters related there too. Is there a motion that we pass this resolution agreeing to negotiate a fee in lieu and ad verbatim taxes? Motion by Mr. Hilt, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, that carries unanimously. Item number seventeen is an ordinance number zero seven zero two dash two zero two three, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu and ad verbatim taxes and incentive agreement by, in between Newberry County, South Carolina, and Project Viking to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other matters related, other related matters. This is first reading, is there a motion related to first reading? Motion by everybody on my left, this be first, no. We'll do Mr. Hilt on the motion, and we'll do Ms. Airwood on the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, and opposed likewise, that carries unanimously. Item number eighteen on our agenda is comments and requests from our county administrator.
Yes, sir, thank you. I just wanted to give you all a quick update on some projects. One is the comprehensive plan, I know you all have some elements, and at the August sixteenth meeting, which is our next meeting, we only have one in August, we'll ask you to motion and vote to approve those elements, and then when we get to the end of the approval of each element, which will take us into the fall, then you'll need to act on an ordinance to actually adopt the plan. One of the elements out of the ten is a land use element, and it really guides your zoning and your land development regulations, and an important element of that is a future land use map. I mean, it's basically the plan for how we'd like to see the county develop, and we've talked about the concept of scheduling a council work session to do that, and match up calendars, I'd like to send an email out to you all just so we can compare ours, so that we can maybe select a date in August that works for you, where we can come in and have our consultant Cheryl Matheny walk you through the proposed future land use map that the planning commission's been working on, and get your input. And then if any direction you all provide, we can incorporate and send it back to the planning commission for consideration. Of course, then they'll recommend it back to you. So I'll be getting an email to you all, out to you all about scheduling that. Of course, we mentioned the Greenwood, Lake Greenwood master plan. They did a calendar, similar calendar request for the kickoff meeting, so that'll be happening in August, and I need to look for confirmation on that date. We're getting ready to move forward on those improvements to Lynch's Woods. You know, Jesse had gone out in Parks and Rec and gotten the forty-five thousand dollars in funding through the Recreation Trails program from SCPRT, so we'll be moving forward with that project. We've got a good team of department heads that are working on an update to the county website. I think you're gonna like what you see, and when they have a more polished product, we will get that out to you all, and you can take it for a test drive. Kind of related to that, and Eric spearheaded this, Eric Niede, our IT director, but we have gone ahead and registered for newberrycounty.gov. Dot gov is a domain that's available to government agencies. It offers us a little bit more protection, it's free of charge. And so we've gone ahead and implemented that. We still have the newberrycounty.net domain, we have both, so if you go to either one, it will point you to our website. Maybe gradually over time, particularly as we deploy the concepts we get back from the branding project, we could move to newberrycounty.gov and just sort of transition over to it. So I wanted you all to be aware of that. Related to branding, we've got the funding in the budget, and we'd like to move kind of quickly on a proposed approach to the project, which we'll run by you before we get started on it. But again, the, the goal of it would be to develop a logo system and some brand identity for Newberry County. And the only other thing, I know this was lengthy, but that I wanted to mention to you all is CPST, Capital Project Sales Tax. We have proposals in for architectural and engineering services for the project. What we have, and those are in, what we have out right now, and they're due on July twenty-sixth, is project management proposals. And what we wanted to do is to get those in, evaluate them, and bring you a recommendation on selecting a project manager who could then assist us in evaluating the architectural and engineering proposals. And then the first goal would be to get those projects engineered, get them professionally estimated in terms of cost, and then bring you that information to decide how we want to move forward with those projects. Because you know the current environment with price escalation, labor, and material shortages, it's a tough environment, so we need to try to nail down estimates on those projects. So there's a good bit going on.
Wonderful, what a great update, thank you so much. Comments or requests from council, Reverend Scott?
First things, love it, thank you.
Mr. Reader? Ms. Airwood?
I've enjoyed my time on council, so y'all keep up the good work.
Mr. Sees?
Just continue to thank staff for their teamwork in helping move along the county and heading us in the right direction. Great team, appreciate, enjoyed working with you guys.
Mr. Shealy?
I'd like to thank Jeff on this, the quick link in her work this morning on some things they've had going on. Congratulations and welcome, Andrew. And we'll definitely miss you, Ms. Airwood.
Hey, Mr. Hilt?
Yes, Jeff, just to kind of follow up on Mr. Grantham's comments, we are undergoing some revisions to our, all our ordinance relating to properties and so forth. And this would also be a good time, if, if we are short of required or either recommended controls for ARBs, we need to take a look at that at the same time that we're doing this other.
Yeah, yes, sir, we'll, we'll do that. And, and like you all said earlier in the comments, it is referred to as the sharing economy, because you know, you've got, you've got accommodations, and you've got food delivery now, and there's just all these other, you, you got rider services as well, and short-term rentals is a component of that, that Mr. Grantham was describing, and they've grown substantially. And I know there are a number of cities and counties around, and beyond the state, but in the state, that have taken some different approaches to addressing that issue. So we'll bring you information on different approaches that are out there, so you're not on the bleeding edge, you can kind of model after other successful efforts and decide if that's something you want to move forward with.
Thank you so much. All right, future meetings are the SCAC Conference Institute of Government, July thirty-first through August the third, Finance Committee meeting on August fourteenth, County Council meeting on August sixteenth, and County Council meeting on September sixth. Mr. Shealy makes a motion that we adjourn.
The Finance Committee, with Mary's departure, we're gonna end up with one person short of the Finance Committee.
Yes, I'll make that appointment this week.
And so we'll need to get somebody, because otherwise we might be short of a court.
Public safety.
Yes, I was gonna say the same thing, I need, we need one on public safety as well. I will get with Jeff, we will have those appointments this week, before the week's out. Who, who, you're just gonna have to do, do double duty for right now. Some of us will, so, but we'll have you, have you, have those appointments, I'll, I'll get with you. And, and we'll get together, we'll make those appointments this week. Thank you, okay? Anything else? He's still got a motion to... All right, is there a second? Mr. Sees, you still got him covered with the second?
I was gonna let Mary.
You gonna let Mary make the second? All right, Mary's second to adjourn. All those in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you so much. We're gonna keep us a supply.